Call to order, the April 23rd, 2024 City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. City Mayor Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember O'Rear.
Here.
Councilmember Rube.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Rocha.
Here.
Councilmember Pinkerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchings.
Here.
Mayor Sheemaker.
Here.
You would please rise as you are able and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each member of council has received a copy of the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting from March 26, 2024. Were there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as written. Now it is time for citizen comments. Mr. Rodfer, if you would come to the podium and state your name and address and begin your comments.
My name is Mark Rodfer. I live at 13 Southern Oaks Court. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Oops, I'm sorry. Yes, keep up the good time.
My name is Mark Rodfer. I live at 13 Southern Oaks Court in the city, and I'd like to thank the Mayor Council for this opportunity to speak. It's been a long time since I've been here. I've avoided coming to City Council for a very, very long time. Last time I was here, I didn't have glasses and all my hair was gray. But I'm here tonight because I feel strongly that I have to speak about something on the agenda that is item TX 2024-1 and lowering the bar to overturn the planning commission. I served on the planning commission for four years. I served as the chairman for two years and have some experience about it. But the planning commission is merely a recommendation body, and anybody who comes to Simpsonville to apply goes to planning commission. Regardless of what the commission votes to approve or deny something, it has the opportunity to come to council. And it just does not make sense to me, any way, shape, form whatsoever, that that bar to approve or deny be the same voting record of 4 to 3. That's what you're asking for. So, and my usual is what I've done. It's only happened once in the past 14, 15, 16 months that council has wanted to overturn a planning commission recommendation. And in my time of four years, it only happened once. They're usually highly controversial items that pack out the score. I sat here for three hours listening to not only Simpsonville residents but non-residents because of the planning commission. They deal with things that could come into the city. It's only fair to get non-residents offering to speak. It's volunteer positions. It's not paid. There's no recognition. There's no annual banquet. There's no certificate of participation for anybody. And they're all appointed by a council. So, my question is, is what are we trying to solve? Because I don't see a problem that they're trying to solve when it's such a rare occurrence that City Council wants to overturn a recommendation. I do have one particular instance when I was starting as chair that it was 7 to 0 unanimous to deny an applicant. And the way the process works is that applicant then has the choice to go to council or not go to council. This particular choice, they delayed going to council for three to four months, materially changed the application. It did not come back to planning commission. It came to council and it passed by an overrule by two votes, by two readings. So, from what I've seen, is things are highly, highly controversial, and I really don't see why we want to make it easier in that case. The planning commission is mandated by state law, and if the votes overrule or coincide or approve or the same, 4 to 3 versus 4 to 3, I think your commissioners or volunteers are going to dry out. Because it's truly them spending their time. It doesn't matter how they vote. There's no extra bar to comment say this. Thank you for your time.
Item 6, staff reports. Item 6A, financial report from Financial Director Christine Farino. Director Farino?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. A few highlights from the March 2024 financial report. The general fund revenues are 76% of the budget for a year-to-date total of $17.8 million. The March expenses are 69% of the budget with a year-to-date total of $16.2 million. Sewer fund revenues are 102% of the budget with a year-to-date total of $2.2 million. The March expenses are 77% of the budget and year-to-date is $942,000. Hospitality accommodations fund revenues are 108% of the budget with a year-to-date total of $3.9 million. March expenses are 75% of the budget and the year-to-date total is $2.3 million. Public Works Enterprise Fund revenues for March are 105% of the budget with a year-to-date total of $1.6 million. And expenses are at 62% of the budget with a year-to-date total of $756,000. If you have to answer any questions, please.
Council? Councilmember Rocha?
Can you explain why the Public Works Enterprise Fund is already at 105% of the budget?
For the revenues?
Yeah. Because we're only in...
Well, we usually get those payments when those revenues are in January and February.
Okay.
When the bulk of the taxes are collected. The rest of the months are just small now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember O'Rear?
I just want to thank Christine for putting together the itemized budget for me this year. I appreciate it. I don't know how much time it took, whatever it did, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Director Farino? Thank you. As I mentioned before, Administrator Graceley is unable to attend this evening. Each member, each department head is here with us this evening or representative of that department in the department head's place. Do we have any questions for any of those department heads? I'm hearing none. I will tell each of you that normally this would be the...
Oh, I was going to ask something real quick.
Go ahead. Councilmember O'Rear?
Oh, there he is.
It's okay.
Yes, sir.
You know, I love sports. So, I was looking at the participation, and there's a lot of, it looks like intersectionality between, like, I'm trying to look at, probably women, a couple of women's sports. Do y'all try to schedule where if someone wanted to be a multi-sport athlete in the same season, that's possible, or is it just you gotta pick?
It's tough. We've had some try and women, and very few because of scheduling. It is the same reasoning, but they find out if they can... We don't want them to have to choose, you know, let one team down or whatever. But it is their choice. If they can manage it through their household, it is their choice. Yes, sir.
All right, excellent. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions for department heads? Normally, at this point in a committee of the whole meeting, I would be offering for the department heads to make their hasty exit. Unfortunately, we're not going to allow you to leave just yet because we are going to move the fourth item on the business items up to be the first item. And Administrator Graceley has requested, by the way, these items that we are reviewing tonight, what we're voting on is whether to move them to the agenda of the next business meeting. This isn't a final approval of anything this evening. Although, if we turn something down, that would be the end of it. But we are going to start with item 7D, the presentation of the fiscal year 2024-25 budget. That normally there would be a budget report for this that Ms. Graceley would present. She has asked council and staff to limit the questions to the department heads to just the capital budget items. And Director Farino is ready to answer any dollar amounts that go with that and any of the detailed questions that you might have on the budget report, to hold those until she is back. She's anticipating being back next Monday. So you can ask her directly or email or call or come in and sit down with her or save your questions for when we go to our first reading of the budget at the business meeting in May. So with that, let's go to the next thing here that lists all of the capital purchases by department that are in the fiscal year 24-25 budget. We put that up on the screen. Before we start this discussion, a motion is in order. Councilmember Rocha?
May I review that council approved presentation of FY 2024-25 budget?
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Rocha with a second from Councilmember Pinkerton. Discussion. Councilmember Pinkerton?
I do have a question. Under hospitality and accommodations, greenways and trails, what are we actually purchasing there?
Well, Christine, if you want to answer that, you can. That would be good. So, yes.
I'm not... I think it's for the trails that we are going to, like, not do in... I'm not 100% familiar with that.
My understanding, that is capital money for extending the Swamp Rabbit Trail from Fairview down to Heritage Park. It's been in the budget for the last two or three years, and we have not secured the property rights to do that at this point.
I looked at the breakdown of that. That's what I found in that breakdown sent. It was $100,000. That didn't seem like it was going to be enough for Swamp Rabbit Trail. Is that the right amount for that? I just couldn't figure out. Everything else in here looks like it's tangible, some kind of asset, but greenways and trails just didn't add up to me to mean anything at the moment.
I'm guessing it's the extension of the Swamp Rabbit Trail into...
Well, we can get more when...
Yeah, Diana would have more.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing no further discussion on item 7D, motion to approve the presentation of the fiscal year 24-25 budget and move it to the business intended items of the next business meeting. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. Motion is advanced by a vote of 7 to 0. Item 7A, SP-2024-05 Harrison Park ID major change. Mr. Derby, our planning director, will you summarize for us, please? And thank you. I think staff figured it out. Yes, it's okay for you to leave.
Good evening, Council, Mayor.
Yes, hold on.
This is a major change to the Harrison Park ID development on Harrison Bridge Road. What we're looking at now is the out parcel along Harrison Bridge Road in front of the residential development, the cottage Harrison Bridge. We have an applicant looking to develop those partial degree for a childcare and a medical facility. Both those uses are within the statement of intent at the element. Unfortunately, their prototype they use is a little bit larger than the restrictions of the statement of intent currently. The current limitation is 15,000, one single commercial building, and their use is 15,616. So what they're looking to do is to change that one wording.
How about that?
Basically, 15,000, or it says in there, they're going to do not exceed 16,000. So that'll give them the ability to develop this property as they see fit under that guidelines. This did go to the April 11th planning meeting. There was some discussion in there regarding traffic and ingress and egress for development. The planning commission did recommend approval of 6 to 0. If you have any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Derby. A motion is in order. Councilmember Hutchings?
Mayor, Council, I make the motion to approve SP-2024-05 Harrison Park ID major change.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Hutchings with a second from Councilmember Rocha. Discussion. Councilmember Hutchings?
My understanding on this is that this has already been, the plans have already been approved with the exception of that square footage change. Is that correct?
No, sir. This is their concept plan. Basically, it's a blank slate. What they're proposing is to develop it there, but they can't develop it, so it's approved through major change. So they do have a... That's their proposed site plan when it does get approved. There's no project right now.
Councilmember O'Rear?
The neighborhood behind there is not in city limits, correct?
Going directly to south?
Yeah, I mean, we're... I drove in yesterday. There's a neighborhood, yes, right behind. They're not annexed into the city, correct?
No, sir, they are. That is the common, that's the Harrison word.
They are. So they are. Have they all gotten letters for that? Or we send them out a month in advance, or you don't have to remind me how many weeks in advance, but have...
Not for this one that require that. That's annexation is rezoning with special exceptions, variances.
So this wouldn't qualify for, I understand it's not qualifying for the rezoning, but they are building on here. Do you not think that it's a good idea to notify the neighborhood of this change that will be happening there?
We do have an application from the owner that gave permission for this to go forward for a major change, which does represent the Harrison Park LLC.
I'll be on record. I think that the neighborhood should be notified. I don't know what council needs to do to approve that. I know it's not necessarily in the writing, but we typically, any type of bills or anything like that, we're letting neighborhoods backed up to these properties know for much simpler things in the past rather than this. So I don't know what council would discuss, and it's another motion, but I think they should be notified for this. At least we can get some, get their, get some kind of feedback than just doing it. That's where I stand. Where council stands on that, I would be for allowing this neighborhood to know and giving them some time to let us know feedback that we need to make before we make our decisions.
Councilmember Rocha?
Mr. Derby, how far in advance is the public hearing for the planning commission provided to the public? The public had an opportunity to attend, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And they're given an opportunity to speak at that meeting as well?
Citizens and non-citizens.
Councilmember O'Rear?
What's this zone right now, and was it recently changed?
No, sir. It is innovative development ID. I believe that your prior zoning was PD plant development, 2012, 2013, where you did re-add all parcels, and you changed your acronym when you used one for PD to ID.
So this particular parcel's been ID'd for a while now?
Yes, sir. All residential and out parcels.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
Yes, sir. Mr. Derby, is there any requirement by SEDOT to do any improvements to Harrison Bridge Road or hips prior to this property being developed?
When they apply for their encroachment permits, we'll see what they are proposing. That's the opportunity for SEDOT to evaluate what vision of road is, what improvements need to be done, and that's at their discretion. How far they take that hip road to Fairview is up to SEDOT.
Okay, so that's with DOT now?
The actual issue here is here. You can probably explain exactly the stage where it's at. People would like to have him kind of answer that for you.
Sure.
Hello, my name is John Conley. I'm with Peters and Sushis. So where we are with permit processes, we're just wrapping up the plans where you can get submitted to municipal county land development as SEDOT to start the process. So we've had preliminary conversations with the DOT as standard practice to give their initial feedback as to what is allowed, where we can put a driveway, and what warrants we're going to have. So we also have a traffic study that was needed to amend what was done prior for this development. So we have that in place. It supports us adding a right and right turn driveway and a decelerating into the development.
So what we see on the plan view here is what's submitted to the SEDOT?
No, sir. It's actually going to be a little different because we did get some further feedback. There's an existing driveway across the road that we had to shift the right and right out slightly closer to the cottage school, but it's only just a few feet. So it's very similar to this, but if things go well, it will get wrapped up tomorrow, sealed, and uploaded to the DOT portal tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Council? Councilmember Rocha?
Am I correct? I see that they are providing a sewer and then dedicating that to the city of Simpsonville? So that will become ours to manage, but they're building it?
Yes, ma'am. That's typical.
Okay. And sidewalks are getting some interconnectivity?
Not on this one, unfortunately. If you go back to their concept plan, the way this was designed, they didn't present, wasn't their statement of intent. They have sidewalks along Harrison Bridge Road, unfortunately. This is one of those things about the ID development. They get held to within the documents of statement of intent and concept, so unfortunately. Legacy Academy, other side of the entrance, they were put in 2019, 2020, and they just extended it up to Harrison Bridge Road per that plan.
Okay, because in the documents we were provided, where it said interconnectivity, it says a sidewalk will be provided from the single family portion of the office district area at the approximate location as shown on the master site.
Correct. That's...
That that would just be...
That would be the main road come in connecting the daycare and the facility to the back, which is the residential portion.
Okay, so residents there, the cottages would be able to access the sidewalk to come to the school or to...
Yeah.
That's what I wanted. We already talked about written proof. It's okay.
Further? Thank you, Council. On the motion to approve SP-2024-05 Harrison Park ID major change, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries by a vote of 7 to 0 and advances to the next business meeting. Item 7B, Z-2024-03, proposed rezoning to ID property located on West Georgia Road. Mr. Derby, would you summarize, please?
Yes, sir. This is West Georgia Road. It's for, this is East Stand Springs and West Georgia Road intersections just east of that. Y'all familiar with the Christian Brothers Automotive that just got developed? This is right next to that to the right. The current zoning is business general. The Athens tonight are looking to have this rezoned to innovative development. They're looking to do a mixed-use product here of commercial in the front with store facilities in the back. This did go to the April 11th planning meeting. It was recommended approval 5 to 0. With your permission, we do have some of our incentives here tonight. I would love to go through the site plan, give a little more detail about this project.
Thank you, Mr. Derby. A motion is in order. Councilmember Rube?
Mr. Mayor, I ask council to approve Z-2024-03 proposed rezoning to ID property located at West Georgia Road.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rube with a second by Councilmember Hutchings. Discussion. Councilmember Rube?
So I drove out here yesterday too, about the mayor and I were looking at it, trying not to get bit by snakes along the way. So it's two residential homes there. It looks like one is not relevant, but it looks like one's been empty for maybe some time. Has the developer already, and this is what the mayor and I were trying to figure out, has the developer already purchased this property? Or is it based on how we vote for going to purchase it and develop it?
They're here today. Do you want to...
Please.
Kyle Ham, ADA, Midtown Drive, all branch of Mississippi. We are under contract for both properties, so we're currently under contract for both these properties.
Okay. Back to Mr. Derby. I'm just confused. Please explain to me how this has been business general with two residential homes on there. That's where I'm just completely... Please explain that to me.
Back in 2019, 2020, we were approached by a realtor that was representing the properties there. They were ours as an accounting, Steely Family Residential Suburban Agreement County. They wanted to be annexed into the city for our conference plan, but seemed fit in that area as being a commercial corridor. We rezoned it to business general. Like I explained, I mean, it's legally non-performing, but we do not allow the Steely Family in business general, so it stays as is, as long as it's occupied. If it ever gets unoccupied, that's when the full reach reaches back, so it has to be commercial. So as what it looks like now, the Steely Family, we have a lot of that on Main Street that are business general, business limited endeavor zone years ago, but they're still occupied and used the same way.
And one last question. It's all over point from the last item. Is the DOT currently doing traffic study on this currently?
Yes, we have had preliminary discussions with DOT. They are doing, have plans for improvements at that intersection. So our conversations kind of went into, you know, basically the location of that access. It's going to be full access drive or right and right out only. Basically, the uses for the climate control for storage is a very low intense use. Commercial configuration is lower as well. So they give no indication that there would be an issue there or any kind of improvements along this property that would be required. And that they do probably that the future improvements have at that intersection will only help that as well.
Okay, so the building on the south is going to be the storefront?
Yes, it'll be the seven-bay commercial retail building roughly about nine miles out of the smart peak.
Okay.
And then the one to the north there is the fully climate-controlled storage. And then all the buildings in the rear are the non-commune. It'll be fully ten-sent facility in the back, gate access code to get to that non-commune. And then same thing to the common key entry element.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rocha?
Mr. Derby, what they're wanting to build here, tell me why it can't be built within the current zoning of BG?
The commercial portion in the bottom left can. Industrial use only for the store facility. So by creating an ID, they're creating their own zoning designation. You're basically what's allowed to be used.
Okay, but so the ID innovative development district is established to provide flexibility in planning and construction. I understand that. But then the exchanges that they have to give demonstrate exceptional quality community designs. And there's guidelines. I personally don't understand how a storage facility really lends itself to innovative development based on those six points or five points.
Correct. Every ID is different. Like I explained before, that they are doing above average kind of material that you can see in a traditional store facility, as you can see there on the plan. Another part of that ID district is what they're funding some charging stations where we don't have those in the city except for two locations. That's part of giving back to the community as well as having an Amazon Dropbox access for people. The issue what you have from basically the Christian Brothers all the way down to food lines, we call it dead zone, Christian sewer. They are bringing sewer from intersection of East Stand Springs to this location to facilitate this place. And they're also bringing up their profit line to help for future growth. That's why they're putting on their own, giving back to the community.
Will there be a charge for the charging stations? Do you use them? There will be? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
So looking at the limited amount of drawings we have, it's basically a concept. There are some contour maps, and you can actually look on Greenville. That's GIS for all the contours of the area. And there's a swale in the middle of this property. So I'm assuming it's not a balanced site?
Yeah, it will be roughly balanced. And then where we place our proposed intention is naturally where the water goes now. So we're not interfering much, you know, difference from where that stormwater is going now.
Go back to the plan view. That's really what I was getting with my question is propose retention pond outfall. As it's shown here, it just dumps into the property next door. Is that the intent? I mean, you're creating quite a bit of impervious area here, that's right now, a lot of vegetation, so you're going to pick up a lot of water, go to the retention pond, and it flows off into the, into the neighbor?
Well, a requirement for, for any kind of improvement is your impervious, or your post-construction runoff rate has to be lower than pre-construction. So that runoff rate at that outlet there will be less than what is pre-construction, as a requirement for that tension, that's why the detention's there, to hold that water to release that at a lower rate than what's there pre-construction.
You don't have a contour map in front of you, do you, because there's a hole in the middle of that property, so it seems to me that most of the water is going to that hole.
Yes, I mean, currently it is, and but then it exits that from that center of that site where our intention is, that's where it exits the site right now. And we have pre and post drainage planes as a part of how we came up with this concept plan, so, you know, shows the pre-developed runoff and the post-developed runoff.
Okay, I got some personal history with retention ponds and water, but I am a bit concerned the way it shows, again, I don't have the benefit of your analysis or the rest of the drawings other than plan view and concept, so I just have, I got a concern when there's no ability for that stormwater to get to wherever it goes to the creek without going to somebody else's property.
Yeah, well, currently that's where the stormwater is going right now, where we're proposing it to be discharged. So as rain comes on this site right now, it exits at the same location as that proposed outlet, and, you know, post-construction, it will be released at that rate at that exact same location, at a less runoff rate.
I wish I'd asked you not to sit down, because I want to clarify one point. I wasn't clear on your answer before, but councilmember Root, is your contract contingent on council approval?
Yes, our contract, our contract for both these properties contingent upon rezoning, that's pretty good, you know, standard for.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that that was the case. Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Derby, if you would confirm for me that currently it's zoned Business General, and under Business General, the entire site could be developed with businesses that conform with that zoning, as is, without having to come back before council? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, I'm, I'm kind of, and in the same place as councilmember Roche, I have troubles wrapping my head around how a storage unit can be considered innovative development. I think the innovative part of it is, is it's not a bad-looking rendering that you have here, the innovative thing that you're asking to do is to do mixed use, which is the only way, ID is the only way that you could accomplish this mixed use. One positive that I would see out of it is, is that I think that you will get less traffic impacting Georgia Road out of this mixed-use ID than you would out of having the entire site go Business General. Does that make sense? Am I on the right track there?
You're correct. Plus, in the back, you'd probably have a hard time selling, leasing that out, because I probably want visibility, so in the back, you'd probably have to, you'd probably look at apartments, somebody trying to pitch that to the city.
That would be allowable under BG?
Special exception.
Okay.
So what does come back for council if it forms orders on any rules?
All right. Thank you. Any further comments from council? Councilmember Pickerton?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just one more question, I think I read it, I don't have it in front of me, that the Department of Transportation's improvements to the intersection there is going to include a right-hand turn lane onto East Standing Springs?
That's correct.
Is that going to, well, you may or may not know this, but that's going to take any property take right there, because it's pretty tight?
I think they've already done the right-of-way acquisition, I think that intersection had some, as well as Ely Ferry, West Georgia Road at the top of it as well.
And is there, is the building of this property contingent on that right-hand turn lane?
No, sir.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from council? On the motion to approve Z-2024-03, proposed rezoning to ID property located on West Georgia Road, move this item to the agenda of the next business meeting, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no.
No.
The motion carries by a vote of six to one, with councilmember Pickerton voting no.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 7C, TX-2024-01, miscellaneous refinements to the zoning ordinance, Mr. Derby, would you summarize, please?
Yes, sir. In the staff report, you have the text amendment for 7.35C, 7.45C, and 7.55C. The current regulation is to allow council to overrule a planning commission recommendation by five votes. Wasn't asked for a update or amendment to that text, to make it a simple majority vote to overturn a recommendation from the planning commission. This did go to April 11th planning commission meeting, there was discussion as well, unfortunately I did not put in the, my staff report, the vote, but it was recommended unanimously six to zero at denial. I could answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Derby, a motion is in order.
Yeah, mayor and council, I'd like to make a motion to approve TX-24, 2024-01, miscellaneous refinements to the zoning ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion from councilmember O'Rear with a second from councilmember Roche, discussion?
Absolutely, we don't be here for a minute. First thing I want to say is, a lot of what I've heard about this, which I didn't really think was that controversial, but a lot of people obviously have, and really seems like the word used like offended and angry and things like that, that's not my intent, but I wasn't given the opportunity to explain my intent before other people had explained my intent for me. My intent was really to, like I put in here, give control, if you, for lack of a better word, to the elected citizens of Simpsonville, for a lot of reasons. One, is a 71 vote threshold, is five votes, it's not a percentage, it's a large hurdle, there's a reason why there haven't been things overturned, especially if you have a very large hurdle. But my intent was not to, to impugn anyone, their abilities, their willingness to serve or anything like that, that has been impugned on me, that that's what I mean by this. No, here's what I mean by this. I mean by this is that we don't even have a percentage, we have a whole number, and I know, I think, councilman Root asked me a scenario. I had a scenario with the planning commission that was absolutely nuts. When I was a citizen, I stood right there with four planning commissioners, asking them to deny something, and when I walked in the room and saw four, I knew we had to have 75% of the vote in order to win, because three didn't show up, which for whatever reason they didn't show up, but those are the kind of numbers you get into, and I think everybody on council, and Mr. Hughes has seen the opinion by Mr. Pelissero, the Appalachian Council of Government, having seen some of these numbers can get. You know, it came up in the planning commission meeting, the scenario of what happens if four people show for a planning commission meeting, which is, which is a quorum, one actually steps aside for a conflict, for Hughes is there to go the word, we have three people voting, which leaves two people on the planning commission to dictate to a seven-person council, who will then have to have five votes to overturn a two-vote planning commission. That almost happened to me. Thankfully, we won four to nothing, but we would have had three votes, if it had been three to one, three votes, and we'd have had to, if, if we would have lost, we would have had to come up here and get five people to agree with us. These numbers do not make sense in any way, shape, or form. Five, now, two-thirds is still five votes, but two-thirds is two-thirds of a quorum. If we were to show up with five people here one night, and this is what Mr. Pelissero pointed out, and one person, just one voted to side with the planning commission, one person will outvote four. How do I explain that to constituents? How do we explain that to constituents? How 14% of the vote of Simpsonville, which is what a ward represents roughly, outvoted 50-plus percent? How do we, how do we explain that? It's inexplicable. I asked Mr. Hughes, and thank you so much for your back and forth with me and your explanations, I asked Mr. Hughes about the quorum issues, if we only have four people to show up, if we only have four people show up, we can't even take action on that. The only ability we have at that point is to let table, it's a table, so we can't even vote anymore. Now, I would hope that we have seven, six, seven people here at all times.
Yeah, okay.
But those scenarios can happen. And then you get farther into this, is, I guess, from feedback, let's get it, here, and Mr. Hughes pointed this out in a roundabout way, if you look at the three larger cities in this county, Greenville, Greer, and Malden, they do not have what we have. They have what I'm asking for. So how is it not insulting to their planning commission? How is it not degrading to their planning commission? Why is it only insulting and degrading to ours? Why is it, why is it the pool dry up just in Simpsonville? Only thing I'm asking for is, is what the other three municipalities have, even Mr. Pelissero wrote that he has never really seen this before. What we have is absolutely so unusual, I just want to bring it back into what's normal. Speaker earlier mentioned something, and I think it's pretty important to point out, this was kind of buried in the details of Mr. Pelissero's opinion, which he didn't claim to be an attorney or anything. Supermajority votes are reserved for extremely important things. I've talked to a fellow council member about the removal of the President of the United States, that's done on supermajority vote, because it's very important. But really, the key thing to look at is, when you have a supermajority vote and you can't reach that threshold, nothing changes. So if the President of the United States gets to the Senate and they can't muster those 60 votes, or 61 votes, whatever it is, he stays in office, he doesn't get to do anything else, he's, it's status quo. With us, what happens, if we don't reach the five votes, the supermajority, something changes. The zoning request goes through, the ordinance request goes through, so that is absolutely contrary to any of the supermajority rules I've ever seen, because what we can't muster five votes, something literally changes. And guess at that point, who has dictated policy onto the citizens of the city of Simpsonville? It is the planning commission, because we have been throttled. We should not have to have a standard of five votes. Greenville doesn't have the standard to overturn an approval. Malden doesn't have the standard to overturn an approval. Greer doesn't have the standard to overturn an approval. But I sit out here and listen to people impugn me and my motives when they don't even know what they are. Those are my motives. My motive is to have these council members and myself represent the people of Simpsonville like we got voted into. They did not vote in the county, the, the planning commission, they voted in the council. I take that role extremely seriously. I ran for a reason, and it wasn't for what was said in the planning commission. I ran because I wanted to represent my hometown. I can't do that at a five-vote threshold, but then have people call me, and like we've discussed, when you go online, my name, my address, my phone number, my email are all there, and I chose to do that. Planning commission does not have that. We are the representatives of the people, not the planning commission, and that's where this should lie, the ability to alter planning commission, big key word here is recommendation. Even Mr. Pelissero said, recommendations are what they are, but it becomes compulsory when you have a five-vote standard. And by ordinance, the planning commission doesn't compel us to do anything, they recommend things to us. This is nothing against anyone past or present on the planning commission, I hope they continue to volunteer, I appreciate their volunteering. And I'll be completely honest with you, you just saw me vote both times tonight to move forward on two things that the planning commission has recommended, in more than one area. I was told that I was going to start denying everything, that's what I was told I was going to do, by other people that don't even know me. I don't do that, I make the best decisions for the city of Simpsonville. This isn't a vehicle to, to gather four votes and start turning everything down. I hope none of my fellow council members believe that. It's to give us what the voters gave us, not the planning commission. Thank you.
Counsel? So, want to talk a little bit about this recommendation for a change to our policy for changing the rule from five concurrent votes to a rule of planning commission to a simple majority. I believe the two-thirds rule has been mentioned several times, that's not what is before us, this is changing this to a, a simple majority. To start with, no planning commission recommendation for approval has ever passed, even though a simple majority of council was in opposition. That's never happened, that I know of. Certainly hasn't happened during my tenure as mayor. Council has overturned the planning commission four times in my tenure as mayor. The votes went five to two, five to two, six to one, and seven to zero. So, the idea that we are not able to overturn the planning commission, that that's somehow impossible, isn't the case. So it, it strikes me, and I agree with the comments from, from Mr. Roderfer earlier, and had this in my notes to say tonight, and after these, these first two points I made here, that this text amendment is an effort to fix a problem that we don't have. I also think it needs to be clear that because we use zoning, we're required by law to have a planning commission, and that's why we appoint planning commissioners to, to serve. The, the issue that I have seen is, is that we have had comments made in council that the planning commission isn't doing their job. When we say things like that, and when, when we have those kind of issues come up, I also share Mr. Roderfer's concern that we may have trouble keeping our planning commission in place and functioning. Our planning commissioners are volunteers, they, of course, like I mentioned, we are required to have a planning commission, required by law to have that, but once we get volunteers to take those positions, to assume those positions, they are now required by law to go through state training. Unless you've served on the planning commission, as far as I know, Mr. Hutchings is the only council member who has served on the planning commission, unless you've been on the planning commission, you haven't been to that training. The planning commission's bible is our zoning ordinances and the comprehensive plan. Those things are pretty hefty, if you've read them, I commend you for reading through them, but I don't pretend to be an expert on our zoning ordinances, and certainly don't have the comprehensive plan committed to memory. I depend a lot on Mr. Derby and his staff for, for answering those kind of questions. So, I agree with Mr. O'Rear, I respect our planning condition, I respect their work, and I want to be clear that the mayor believes you are appreciated and valued for your service to the community. When we vote with five votes or more to overturn the planning condition, I feel like that lands in the category of, we really that lands in the category of we really meant it. If we change it to simple majority, there are scenarios where if we have less than full attendance at a council meeting, for example, a quorum requires four of us to be here. We change it to a simple majority, now we could have three council members overrule the Planning Commission, which is less than a majority of council, just based on attendance for that evening. If one of those four members of council were to refuse themselves because they had a conflict, now two members of council could overrule the Planning Commission. Just kind of just flipping our whole five-vote rule right on its head, which I think is problematic. I'm opposed to doing that. The rule we have also insulates the Planning Commission from the political winds. It also insulates council a little bit from these political winds by making the hurdle higher to overrule the Planning Commission. The political winds are constantly shifting. Sometimes they blow this way, sometimes they blow that way, and sometimes they blow extremely hard. The Planning Commission are not elected positions. They don't have to worry about, do they keep their job based on politics, or do they have to consider which way the political winds are blowing? It is something I think that's important to remember, that we do appoint those members to the Planning Commission, and that's where the voters depend on us to get those appointments right. We've had council members ask for the community's opinion on Facebook, asking the constituency for what their opinion is. This is a very complex issue with a lot of legal implications and a lot of depth in rules and regulations that our Planning Commission has to follow and we as council have to follow. And even us as council members have sometimes had a difficult time understanding all of these rules and legal implications. So asking laypeople in general their opinion is going to generate feedback, but doesn't really have value. And what I mean is, you won't have any trouble getting their opinion. It will just be an opinion that isn't bolstered by the depth of knowledge that you need to have on these complex subjects. I'm not saying that laypeople can't educate themselves on the nuances. I really believe you can. I'm just saying it's typically, they don't. It's not their job to know all of this. It's our job and the Planning Commission's job, and it's kind of not fair to ask people who don't have the depth of knowledge to weigh in on this kind of thing. Regarding council not understanding all of the rules, here are some examples. Council member told attendees at a local meeting that if the Planning Commission voted this down, that'd be the end of it. That's not how, that's not the case. It's not how it works. The Planning Commission only makes recommendations to council. They vote up or down, but it always comes to council regardless of whether they recommend to deny or recommend to approve to city council. Some of us here have made it clear during council meetings, we don't understand the difference between approving a zoning designation versus approving an individual business. Council member didn't understand the illegality of ex parte communications between a council member and the Planning Commissioner, that you can't carry on conversations outside of the light of day that's required by the Freedom of Information Act, that that's explicitly illegal. And that's not an accusation, that's a not having the depth of knowledge, not knowing the things that you don't know. Council member suggested that it's very rare for the Planning Commission to recommend denial, that they're a rubber stamp. They always approve everything that comes before them, that there have been very few cases where they have not. And I think what is missed in that is that there are so many high hurdles to get over to even get something in front of the Planning Commission. They are required, a quester of one of these changes is required to do a lot of work in advance, and they work together with our Planning Department to make sure that they have the best chance of getting something passed. They don't want to put something in front of the Planning Commission that's going to fail. So they're putting together the best product they can in order to get it passed the Planning Commission. So while it might seem like, because there's so many approvals, what gets missed is how many times we've had requesters give up. And a perfect example is the last Planning Commission meeting. There was an item that was on the agenda that was withdrawn by the applicant because when they got the information back from SEDOT about everything they were going to have to do, they said, oops, we can't afford this. But that doesn't go in the not approved column by the Planning Commission. It never got to them. So I think it's problematic to keep score in that way when you don't know how many proposed ideas there are and how many don't actually make it in front of the Planning Commission. There are more examples than this, but my main point here is that some of us need to be aware that there are things that we don't know, things that I don't know. There are things that we don't know that we don't know. So proposing changes to our code of ordinances before you have your feet on the ground as a new council member, I think is exposing us to possible legal risk and unnecessary legal risk. Simple majority rule has issues with the minority of council being able to decide under certain circumstances. I went over this already. I've heard the term disenfranchisement of the voters thrown out. Not tonight, but I've heard it before. It did get mentioned earlier about, I represent one ward. No, you represent the entire city. And there is no lack of representation of all the voters in this city because all of the voters vote for all of the seats on council. Every member of council was elected by the entire voting body, and the mayor is elected by the entire voting body. So there is no disenfranchisement, and it's a misunderstanding of what disenfranchisement even means. And I think it's important to remember that we do represent all of the voters, and all of the voters have the chance to vote us out if we get something wrong. But the five-vote rule doesn't mean somehow your vote as a council member doesn't count just because it didn't go the way you wanted. The two-thirds rule, that is a commonly applied rule. It's codified in the United States Constitution. It's required in multiple places in Roberts Rules. On our cheat sheet, council, there are three places that require two-thirds vote. That's not in our council rules, that's right straight out of Roberts Rules. So the two-thirds vote is not particularly an unusual thing. Mr. Hughes, do any other municipalities use a five-vote rule?
The only, well... Make sure the microphone's on, please. So of course I have not canvassed every city in the state. I can speak for the ones that I represent here in the upstate and the one that Mr. O'Rear referenced earlier. So the five-vote rule is, in Malden applies the five-vote rule for a recommendation of denial by Planning Commission, not a recommendation of approval. The, in city of Greer, has a two-thirds majority to overturn a recommendation of denial from Planning Commission, and the city of Greenville follows the same. And those are, in terms of the five-vote rule, that's Malden is only the one that uses that only for a recommendation of denial. Cannot speak to the large number of other cities in the state of South Carolina.
So we differ, but there's nothing illegal about how our rule exists, is there?
There's nothing illegal about our rule, and this is a policy decision by council. And you have the authority to establish how you choose to override or approve the recommendations from Planning Commission.
Can you discuss what the legal concerns are when council overturns a recommendation from the Planning Commission?
So a lot of my time and prior experience with, let me just back up. When Mr. O'Rear was representing some communication that we had earlier, we, I expressed to him in my career as a local government lawyer and representing, I guess, representing six cities now, and I have learned to, over the course of my career, rely upon the planning staff who is engaged with the Planning Commission when they evaluate planning decisions. And these decisions can be very complex. And I've learned to appreciate Planning Commission members, their input, their experience when they evaluate these decisions. These, sometimes they have engineers, land surveyors, individuals with a lot of experience in evaluating these complex decisions in light of your comprehensive plan, your zoning ordinance, and your land development regulations. All that, to me, over time, I've learned to appreciate their expertise, and I've had steep learning, learning how to properly apply all of those different authorities to zoning decisions, which this council and Planning Commission has a valuable role that they play for this city council. And it works best, of course, when, and I'm not saying you don't work well with your Planning Commission, but when Planning Commission assists council with these difficult decisions by going through these processes before it comes to this body. The big concern that I always have in any decision by the Planning Commission or this council, when they are evaluating a decision to deny an application, is whether or not your decision is based on a rational, good faith basis and evaluating the criteria that are established by your own zoning ordinance. And you've seen in the zoning ordinance that is before you, the text amendment, any text amendment, any change in zoning, there are criteria that this council and Planning Commission both have to evaluate to make sure that they're making the proper decision. And so I'm always careful to advise both bodies that those criteria have to be examined very closely before you tell a property owner or developer who has investment-backed expectations that they can't do the development in the city, when it does in fact meet your zoning requirements, or your LDO, or your comprehensive plan, or all three. That is when you get into a situation to where you get the risk of running into a regulatory taking, and the property owner is asking you to pay for their, asking the city to pay for their property because you deprived them of their highest and best use of that property. So that is always the legal concern that I have in any zoning decision made by Planning Commission or this body. And of course, there are complete examples where appeals to the Planning Commission, lawsuits against city councils, county councils, have resulted from decisions that they deemed arbitrary. And so I'm not saying this council is making arbitrary decisions, or your Planning Commission's making arbitrary decisions. But we, I would stress the importance of this council making the planning decision matter. We want their decision to matter. And I had no idea, and I've asked, and I've actually asked prior employees of the city who were there when this zoning ordinance was passed, you know, what was the reason you had five votes? And no one can tell me why. So I don't know why that came, other than the fact that it seemed, wherever that language came from, they wanted more weight placed on planning, they wanted the planning decision to matter more. Having said all that, it is this council's, you have the right to change that. Mr. O'Rear's proposed ordinance is legal. You can make this change. That's just my thoughts on it, and hopefully I answered your question in somewhat of a roundabout way.
Thank you. Let me clarify a couple of points on that. If council were to, you know, if we were to approve this text amendment change and then were to deny a property owner, and they, later, another item comes before council and we overturn the Planning Commission by a vote of four to three, let's say, and the property owner decides, you've done a governmental taking, I'm going to sue the city, would not their attorney put in as exhibit one, here's where council made the decision to make it easier to overturn the Planning Commission?
I would expect them to raise that issue.
Okay. The next issue, I think that the driver behind putting this text amendment in front of the Planning Commission in council is primarily based around traffic, that there has been concern that we have approved too much development in the city that is increasing traffic. And I share that concern with traffic. I, you know, it's a very difficult problem, and it's an absolutely difficult thing to manage, and you would be blind if you said that there weren't increasing traffic problems in Simpsonville and Greenville as the county as a whole, and the upstate in South Carolina, where the fastest growing state in the country in the upstate, it's one of the fastest growing parts of the state. But my question for you is, is increasing traffic a valid reason by itself to deny a request?
If that was the sole reason, I would have significant concerns about the decision.
Okay, thank you. I think that answers all my questions for you, Mr. Hughes. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Typically, I'm in favor of passing items out of committee of hold to the business agenda. We usually do this in order to give an applicant time to correct concerns that have been brought up by council, rather than just summarily dismissing their item before they've even had a chance to address any of those items. In this case, this item belongs to council. I don't think we need extra time, and it is my intention to vote no and not even move it on to the business agenda. And so that concludes my comments. And before we go on anywhere else, counsel, I move the previous question.
Second.
So we have a motion from the mayor with a second by council member Williams to move the previous question to explain what that means for council. There is, this is a motion that will close debate and cause the previous question to be put immediately to a vote. It's not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds vote in order to pass. So all those in favor of moving the previous question?
Point of order. I'm not understanding what's happening here. Are you trying to keep it from going to the next agenda?
No, I'm only closing debate on the previous question, which is the motion that's...
So nobody else gets to speak?
Right. Okay. You have a point of order? All right, on the motion to move the previous question, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes? All those opposed signify by saying no.
No.
I think that that's pretty clearly a no. Was that six to one?
Yes.
Okay. All right, council member O'Rear.
All right. You know one of the biggest words in the English language is, that only has two letters? Yes. We talk about a lot of yeses, a lot of assumptions. Mr. Hughes, even in your letter, you put, "I would caution council that overriding all recommendations," that's awfully big assumption, that the, and that's what goes to what I was talking about earlier, people placing their beliefs or what they think I'm doing this for on the things. So you're going to make a decision solely based off of what might, could happen. Well, let me tell you what hasn't happened. The Planning Commission averages, according to a couple folks I've talked to, less than one denial a year. And I understand the process, and I'll be honest with you, I didn't really personally appreciate it. You're mentioning the fact that I'm new and maybe I shouldn't even be putting an ordinance for it. I mean, what's a good timeframe? I'm glad, like, what, six months, eight months, a week? Y'all let's answer that question. No one said it was impossible. As long as you have five people up here, you can have five votes. But that's the problem. You gotta have at least five people, and none of them actually excuse themselves. You know, Mr. Hughes, let me ask you a question about if, what's to stop another council, even this council, from... this council for, forget this five to two thing, let's make it seven to, let's make it six to one. But where does it stop when you start assigning numbers of votes? I mean, is there, I'm asking, is there a point where you legally can't, is five to yet? Now, again, Mr. O'Rear, this is a policy decision. This council has by statute the authority to make this decision to change how you evaluate planning commission decisions. Exactly. And that's kind of the point here, is we can do this.
You can.
Yes, the rest of this is all emotion on the opposition. It has nothing to do with any substance, because nothing has happened yet. Nothing can happen until it's passed. This is all nothing but pure speculation of what might happen. Well, what's happened in Greve, Greer, and Malden? They have simple majority override planning commission approvals. Has the world come to an end in those three cities? Only so. No. So what's the big ask here? Really, what's the big ask? We're just going, we're just, look, I get the two-thirds on denials. Denial's a big deal. I know that. I read your letters. You start denying things, I am not going to dispossess someone properly. The whole point to me is that the decision makers need to be sitting up here right now, not the decision makers on Thursday nights. And that's the kind of the road we're on. There's a reason why there has only been four overrules, because you got to have five votes. We all saw what happened in December here. The three outgoing members of this council were the ones that voted in the new development behind target. Everyone saw that. There was a public outcry over it. And for council to make statements like, "Why are you asking the public? They're laypeople." You know what I've heard for years when I came and spoke at that podium? Is that where, that's where it counts. It counts when people come tell you what they think. So what does it matter if they tell you on Facebook, or if they tell you standing right there? Because there's going to be one person speak against this. I had a ton of people speak for this at the planning commission. All of a sudden, that's evaporated. And as it gets to the wards who represent, so it was a percentage divided by the number of council members, roughly 14%. I wasn't trying to make an exact number or any, I know who I represent. I had to put campaign signs up everywhere across this city, not just in Ward One. I understand how that works. And it's not possible for us to have three people to vote. It's not possible. We would have to table something. We couldn't move on a planning commission item. Let me see until I get to the end of this. Yeah, I mean, the biggest thing here is we're working on assumptions at this point. I'm working on the fact that, one, I don't care how long I've been here. I'm a council member. I'll put an ordinance up if I want to, whether you feel like or anyone feels like I'm qualified. It's been made very clear, it's perfectly legal, perfectly sound, and we can perfectly vote on it. To absolutely try to throttle this council by a motion to not allow us to speak again is absolutely absurd. To tell me I can't talk again because you get the benefit of being the mayor and you get the benefit of talking last and you want to shut the rest of us up? That's not fair. That's not fair to our constituents. The people that voted for all of us, that's not fair. But we can't work off assumptions. Greve, Greer, and Malden have not fallen apart because we have a simple, they have a simple majority vote. And in your letter, which I pointed out when you sent it, you did not tell us that it was a simple majority vote for all three municipalities to overturn an approval. And that's what we're talking about here. Denials are rare. In fact, I've called the first one all year. I called the first one. I got another ordinance going in front of the planning commission in June. I'll see if I catch the second one, too. It's almost unheard of to get a denial, which is fine. I'm glad they do the work and they get here. But we should not be hamstrung by this and we shouldn't be hamstrung on this vote, simply off of assumptions of what may happen when you've got absolute proof Greve's not dying, Greer's not dying, and Malden's not dying because of a simple majority vote to overturn an approval from the planning commission. I just don't get this. Thank you.
Counsel? Council member O'Rear?
I would add, I think Mr. O'Rear has been so completely thorough, that's why all of us are so quiet. But no board or commission that's been appointed should have more power with their vote than the elected officials that the people put in that position. That's my reasoning behind approving this. It has nothing to do with any sort of emotion about planning commission or their importance. I think everybody up here knows planning commission is important. Boz is important. Every commission that, you know, volunteers, volunteered to do and do the homework is important. And we're very, I am personally grateful for everyone. I've served on Boz before I came on council. It takes time, it takes homework, it takes dedication to make sure you're doing the right thing by the right people. It's not, it's not, it doesn't need to be this emotional. It just doesn't. To me, what's happening right now feels like two people here don't like each other. And that is overriding the common sense that is before us. I'm trying to figure out exactly what's going to change based on the history of planning commission vote and then council city vote, or council, city council votes. This just doesn't have to be this passionate. And the fact that it had to go through planning commission, I'm still not sure why. Any other ordinance that we've ever attempted to clean up, planning's brought plenty of them before us in the last few years, just as a routine, going through our ordinances and saying, "There's something wrong here. There's a loophole. This is just too tight, or this is just too loose. We want to change the wording." And we vote and it's done. And this has been taken way out of proportion, run through the exact commission that it will affect, or will it? I don't know. Will it make them do their homework more than they do already? If we only need four votes to pass something, that makes no sense to me whatsoever. I'd just like to see us all take the motion out of this, put the power of the vote back into the hands of council, because that's where it needs to be. We should not be straddled by a board or commission that we appoint. And it doesn't have to be something where that's taken as, you know, we don't value our planning commission. No other city has this. Comes down to that for me. Why do we have this? And, you know, I've asked the question and there's no answer as to how it got this way. But I think it's time to rectify it. I don't like being, having my hands tied by an appointed commission.
Council member O'Rear?
I agree with council member Shea's comments. I think things have gotten, I think people's feelings have gotten hurt and this has kind of gotten carried away. I don't, I don't think this is a reflection, I can speak for council member O'Rear, that this isn't a reflection of our unappreciation of any volunteer. We appreciate what they do. We take recommendations seriously. I do. I often have asked Director Derby and Director Knutson before him, how was this deliberated? What were questions asked? How did the vote go? Because I take my job seriously and I base it on the homework that they've done, and I appreciate what they've done. I think I could speak personally if Director Derby would mind. I called him after the last meeting last month. I deliberated up here and sometimes you go home and you think about how you perceived and what you said. And I said, I told my wife, "I need to call John in the morning. I don't know if he took what I said the wrong way." And I called and I apologized and you said, "I didn't get offended." And I was, I took you for your word. I hope you meant it and I hope you see from my standpoint. So I think from, it's easy to get defensive and go, "They don't appreciate me, they don't trust me, they don't think I'm doing my job." I can see why these thoughts have come up, perhaps, but I would like to at least, from my point of view, that that is not the concern here with me. I think there's several points that I would like to echo. When this was passed back six or seven years ago, I didn't like it then. I couldn't name one person on the planning commission in that time. It had nothing to do with that. To me, it didn't feel right that an elected body doesn't have the same control, or whatever, however you want to word it. I hate to, I'm not using the word power for a reason, because I don't want that to take the sound bite here, but that an elected official body that was elected to make these kinds of decisions can get overruled by a committee that that very body elects and assigns. So the other thing for me was, nothing else that we vote on up here requires five vote? I'm not sure, again, why that is. The other thing that stands out is the very, you know, council members that put this into effect can't put a finger on why this was done. So there's a lot of reasons why we did it then, didn't get that much discussion, but it kind of rubbed me the wrong way back then. Ultimately, my decision aligns, if I could narrow it down to one, it is a recommendation. We've used that word several times. They're not voting. It's not their vote. Here's what we see. It's a recommendation and it's our decision. And that decision should be based on simple majority like anything else that we do. So that's, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Counsel? Council member O'Rear?
I, as the mayor said earlier, I served two terms on the planning commission. I understand all of the processes that the planning commission goes through to reach their recommendations. And I have the utmost respect for that process and for the planning commission itself. The issue I'm having, I'm, this is probably one of the harder votes that I've ever had to make, to be honest with you. I'm trying to, in my mind, figure out what the pros and cons are on both sides of this issue. Do we have, Mr. Hughes, do we have a date, Mr. Witness, five vote, which already was put into place?
I don't, I have not been able to determine that.
I believe it was before my time. I mentioned six or so years ago. I think it was probably further back than that.
I think it's, I think it's at least 10 years old.
Yeah. So we operated up until 10 years ago without, with the simple majority.
I can't. I can't. I know, but it's not.
My thinking is, I'm still undecided as to how I want to vote on this, but I would be in favor of moving this on to a business meeting so that we can discuss these issues a little more in depth and try to, this is a very important decision. And we need, in my opinion, to thoroughly examine it before we, before we put it away. So I would be in favor of moving it on to the business meeting at this time.
Counsel? Council member Williams?
One thing that was said is that we should make this decision on what could happen, but I feel like if we're changing the five vote rule, should we not take in consideration what could happen in, you know, a simple majority of whether or not you have three or four people? And all the possible scenarios, because it's, you're changing the ordinance and not, you know, people on council can change or over throughout the years, and it's going to apply to everyone for a period of time. And I feel like if it's something that has been, if there's, if there's been something that's come up through the planning commission, gone all the way through the hurdles through the planning commission and brought to council, I don't really see a problem with majority of council, all of council, making that decision to overturn. Because I feel like at that point, it would have to be something controversial or something that was big enough to get to that point. And there are scenarios that could come up where only two or three people are voting. And I don't feel like that's representing the city of Simpsonville when it comes to that. If you have five out of seven, then it's representing more of the city as a whole than some of those scenarios that could come up in the future.
Counsel? Council member Pickerton?
Mr. Hughes, in either scenario, if we end up with a council quorum that's less than four, three, whatever it works out to be, in either way, it could be postponed to another meeting, right? Any council member could bring up postpone because of, because of the lack of votes. Am I correct? In either situation.
If you don't have a quorum?
If you do have a quorum, it was brought up in the, in the planning meeting, the scenario if you had a quorum, it kind of was brought up with four, quorum of four and one refused, that their concern with planning was that it could go ahead and get a vote, two to one. But at that time, somebody, in either scenario, could move to postpone the vote.
Yes, sir, Mr. King, that's right. You could make a motion to table to the next meeting and that could be approved, that my majority vote.
So it's a possibility to postpone or table. And the legal ramifications that you wrought based on overturning could happen no matter what council's requirements to overturn a vote would be, whether it's five, four, six, or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely. Look, I want to stress, this is more not necessarily to the text amendments being proposed, but just a reminder of how important zoning decisions are by this council and the planning commission, and the importance that they place on those. And my point to you was, you know, I know that everyone doesn't say they're, I listened to the planning commission meeting audio, I know how they feel about it. I just don't want, I want you to value those decisions. I know you are, because those decisions are very valuable. And ultimately, your call as to whether or not the application should be approved. And it is just a recommendation. I just, I just want that point to be made to this council that the planning commission, their role should be, should be valued.
Thank you. Counsel? Council member Shea?
So consensus has gone before planning commission and they voted to deny. Does it take five votes tonight to override their vote?
No, tonight, so let's, I don't know why you brought that up, because tonight, simple majority vote sends to the business meeting. If it does advance and to correct what I inserted in my memo that Mr. O'Rear referenced earlier, the, this council has the authority to change the ordinance by a simple majority. So if it goes to a business meeting on first reading, it's going to advance to second reading with a simple majority vote. It's not going to require five votes to send it on to second reading. Is that, I know it gets kind of convoluted, but I, I want y'all to go into the first reading going, because in my memo, I said it would be five votes to overturn, since the planning commission denied a recommendation, would take five votes to overturn that. It's just going to take a simple majority, because what this council has the authority to do, you can't take away your opportunity to amend your own ordinances. And so your own ordinance was by a simple majority vote, and the zoning ordinance that was adopted was a majority vote, whatever it was. So you should, you have the right to change that ordinance by a simple majority vote.
It's a simple majority tonight to move it on, simple majority to- It's a simple majority tonight to move it on, simple majority to change it next time, or?
Correct.
Got it.
So a simple majority vote to approve it or deny it at the first, if you advance it to the business meeting.
Council member O'Rear?
I'm not trying to give you hard times, don't get me wrong, but you know how big of a deal that is? At what point after this memo was sent, we know that? And that we knew that needed to be a correction, and, because that's a huge deal. And that's kind of why we're here tonight, is there's a big difference between four to five. And so now to know that it's a simple majority all the way through this voting process, that's a big deal to me. I mean, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is everything up here, everything should be simple majority, everything you do. And I know the mayor mentioned a few procedural things, Robert's rules orders, I'm getting that, there's a procedural. But yeah, that's a big deal. I just didn't know, and I'm glad you did the memo, but I wish I'd corrected it a little earlier, I guess. Well, we're, yeah, well, we're, before your first, first business meeting, and it takes two readings, so, you know, and that's why I'm bringing it up now. Thank you.
Council? On that point, so, on that particular point, the way, I found out about that today as well, and on that point, the kind of the way I understand it is, as council, we cannot vote on things that take away the ability of a future council to take up that decision again. We can't bind council in the future. And since that item was voted by a simple majority, then we, we have to, we have to go back by simple majority. We can't, I don't know if I made any more sense to what you said, but that's kind of the way I saw it, is that it was voted by simple majority, to change it is simple majority. However, I want to make sure that we are clear, because I know that this item has been discussed and may come in front of council in future. Mr. Hughes, I want to make sure we're clear on 2018-07, the ordinance that requires five concurrent votes of council to hire or fire a department head, that in that ordinance, council voted specifically to require five votes to overturn that ordinance, and that counts. We would still have to have five votes to overturn that.
I agree with that, because it's specifically stated in the ordinance, but that's what's required.
Right.
In this particular case.
Now, that ordinance, and this is my next thing, if I would like for you to clarify why this particular item had to go in front of the planning commission, that ordinance, 2018-07, was an ordinance enacted by council that didn't go through the planning commission, we wouldn't, we wouldn't pipe that through the planning commission, correct?
That's correct. Any amendments to your zoning map, zoning text, conference of plan, by, by ordinance has to go before the planning commission.
And that's why this item had to go in front of-
That's correct. This is a, this is an amendment, tax amendment to your zoning ordinance.
Okay. Any further comments from council? On item TX 202401 miscellaneous refinements to the zoning ordinance, all those in favor of passing this, this item and moving it to the business agenda of the next business meeting signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries seven to zero. With that, that concludes all of the items on our agenda. If there are no objections, we will stand to adjourn.